All right. Good evening, everyone. It is 5:59, and I'm going to go ahead and call to order the March 15, 2022 Placerville Planning Commission meeting. If you all could please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rivas, if you could call roll.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Friend, here. Vice Chair Gopur.
Here.
Commissioner Keeney.
Here.
Chair Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner List.
Here.
Okay. Great.
Full house.
Awesome. So now we'll go on to move on to our consent calendar where we will approve our agenda for tonight and the meeting minutes from the March 1, 2022 meeting.
Madam Chair, if I may, just a point of order. The Item 3, adoption of the agenda, is not a consent item.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. It's different.
That's okay.
Okay, so we'll move to adoption of agenda. So can I entertain a motion for adopting?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Friend, second by Commissioner List. All in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move to the consent calendar where we'll approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 1 of the Planning Commission. I did have one change that I saw. It lists me as present and absent, so I just need to be removed as present on the minutes.
Yes, so which is it?
I was absent. Yes, I was not here.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so that was the only thing I saw. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, I have a question for staff, if I might. So Pierre, with regards to the Item 10, the environmental assessment on Lincoln Street, and we had considerable discussion, and I believe, I thought we had made findings as to why we could make some exception from the standards and guidelines. That was kind of my recollection. Maybe Commissioner Keeney can help my feeble memory, but I thought, at least from my perspective, there were some exceptions, and that was, that kind of was the basis for the discussion, ultimately, the decision. And I was wondering if that is supposed to make its way into the minutes, particularly if counsel needs to refer to that in addition to watching, you know, the recording of the meeting. But is that something that would normally find its way into the minutes?
Yes, if the Planning Commission adds additional findings to support your decision, absolutely. I would say that with regards to the California Environmental Quality Act, the categorical exempt pursuant to that particular section is fine. If you had additional findings, it would have been made to support the finding of consistency with the general plan, the design guidelines, and the zoning.
Well, the standards and guidelines are, is part of our ordinance, correct? We've adopted those. So an exception was made, right? It was like a variance, for lack of a better term.
Well, you would just be making findings then to accept, and more in particular, we made those changes to conditions of approval under 3.1, and I've provided underline and strikeout to capture what I think the intent of the commission was, to direct staff to make, the, that staff to have the ability to approve of similar vinyl windows in place of the wood.
Okay. So I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this further. I think that moving forward, at least for myself, and I don't know if this is of value to other commissioners, but it seems that if we find ourselves in a situation where we are going to grant variance, or we're going to make an exception, for whatever reason, we probably ought to be explicit, and so it makes its way into the minutes as well as being in the recording. Because I think for future review and analysis, it may be beneficial. So I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes as presented, with the exception, the correction of the chair being absent.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Second by Commissioner Keeney to adopt the minutes as amended. And just on a side note, I would agree, it would be nice to have the discussion in there just because if you're going to research old topics, it would be helpful to memorialize that one, possible.
Yeah, that is a good point, and I don't remember that we actually made a, another finding. It was just a general discussion, but I think your point is well made.
Yeah, I was approaching it as a finding, and I probably should have said in my motion, make the finding that, because that was kind of the level of review that I was approaching it at, you know, since it was a, I won't say a deviation, but it was, it was an allowable exception, in my view, so, anyway.
I like the...
Yeah, Madam Chair of Staff could make a comment on that.
Absolutely.
Yes, I would say you're absolutely correct. Commissioner Friend, should you decide to modify or add any additional findings, they should be made part of a motion. When staff puts together the minutes, the minutes are not a transcript, but the minutes, and so they're not going to reflect the discussion. So anything you feel important to support your final decision, we should include in the motion.
Perfect. Okay. So with that, we have approved the minutes for the March 1 meeting, and now we'll move to items pulled from the consent calendar, which we do not have tonight. So next on our agenda is items of interest to the public for non-agenda items. This is the time of the meeting where members of the public may address the commission on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, but not on tonight's agenda. Speaker time will be limited to three minutes, and I see we do have a public comment.
Yes, Chris Payne. I'm Vice President of the El Dorado Gold 1848. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We have acquired the old post office, and so I want to let you know, first of all, you have an open invitation to arrange a tour, if you'd like. I don't know how many of you actually had gone into the building when it was the District Attorney's Office. Hopefully, not too many of you. But anyway, we have been working very closely with the city and also with others in the community. Most recently, because of the courthouse having a high-profile case going on, trial going on, the, there was an arrangement made with us to allow witnesses to come and have a place to be separate from the courthouse. And so we, we worked that out with them, and so they've been taking advantage of having some space that they can be away from the main courthouse. Being a witness, you rather, you know, separate yourself, obviously, from, from the court. The other thing is, is that we had, we had leased the District Attorney, which is kind of strange, but we were really happy, three parking spots, so that they could be across the street from the courthouse and have parking available. So we really have tried to monetize our, our purchase so that we can keep it and keep the building in good shape. But that's kind of what I wanted to let you know, that we're, oh, and downstairs in the lower floor, we're renting suites. We have about five or six different rooms that we call suites, and so we're going to be renting those in order, again, to produce some money to be able to operate. It's pretty expensive. It's a large building. So thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
Cool. Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for the information.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Ms. Payne, if you could just come back real quickly, because I thought I heard you offer an invitation for a tour, and I didn't know if you were, had those set up on a regular basis, or?
No, we haven't up to this point, but we're getting to the point now where we have, I mean, it's, it's, we've had to go through and clean it very, very thoroughly, and we have tables and chairs available for people to have meetings, and, and so we're, we're, the, I'm giving you an invitation to approach me at some point, if you want. It doesn't have to be immediate, because obviously, we're going to be around for a while, but, but at some point in time, we're going to have an open house, maybe later, a few months from now, when we got a few more of the things taken care of, so.
If you have an opportunity, if you have an opportunity, maybe just pass your contact information on to staff.
To Pierre, yeah. It may not be tonight, though. I just want to let you know.
No, 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 no. You're convenient. It'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes?
Yes, I'm Ruth Michelson. I'm a building owner in downtown Placerville, 352 Main Street. It's an 1856 building. We have a business there and have had that for six years. And I just want to say a quick thing about Chris. I've known Chris since the 90s, when we were both engineers for the county, and I think he's all too, I've known Pierre since the 90s, but Chris is now a county planning commissioner, as you are a city planning commissioner, so I feel honored that he is here.
Thank you, Chris.
My comment tonight is more a general one, about the operation of your city planning commission. My concern has been, as I've watched these meetings over these past couple of years, a pattern in which an issue comes before you, and there's some clear guidance that's provided through a staff report, and the staff report clearly delineates where those recommendations come from, whether it be ordinance, development guidelines, general plan, et cetera. I'm not a specialist. I couldn't tell you exactly where they come from, but I think Pierre does a good job. And my concern is, my understanding of a planning commission, and like I say, I met Chris and Pierre back working for the county. I worked as a, as an engineer for nine years, and I did take many issues in front of the Board of Supervisors, so I have some experience in this area. My concern is, it seems to me that it's your job to enforce those ordinances. It's not your job to freely interpret your own opinions. This isn't a commission of individual people with opinions. You have something that you've sworn to, to enforce. And oftentimes, there's a conversation in this commission about, people should be allowed to do what they want to do. We shouldn't turn people away if they're putting money into their properties, et cetera. Well, no. I mean, you have historic districts for a reason, to preserve homes in those historic areas. So I find it disturbing, and I've written a letter concerning my observations to all city council members, to the city manager, to Pierre, and I just wanted to let you know that I have written that letter of concern. I'm also was concerned about your decision two weeks ago, and was part and parcel of the appeal that was, was filed on that decision two weeks ago. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Do other members of the public? Yes?
Good evening. Kirk Smith. I only have three minutes, so my prefatory comments is just to let you know that I respect all of you. You're very bright and dedicated, hardworking, do what I think is a thankless job, and I wouldn't want it, and grossly underpaid. But I do want to echo the comments you've just heard, because I've had a lot of experience over the years watching what goes on here, more than a dozen years. One of the first proceedings I watched was when a, in a matter of a contested case, one of the commissioners who I casually knew approached me during the break and asked me how I thought they should decide it. Caught off guard, I gave an innocuous, indescribable, innocuous, garbled answer. And I've seen that kind of thing ever since. As was suggested, you, it's not within your discretion to make stuff up as you go along or come up with your own interpretations. You have a city council, you could ask for it. You can take out Google and say, hey, Google, okay, and ask, and you'll get the same answers I've been giving you for years. Andrew Painter, a number of years ago, I was present when he passed out an article, written for laypeople in this field, that said that ex-party communication is prohibited, and it made reference to the 14th Amendment. I repeated the same thing many times and passed out that article again. It's, it's just fundamental, and I'm not talking about something I learned in 1972 when I went to law school. I'm talking about something I learned in high school. Remember that lesson we had about the three branches of government? How FDR had these alphabet agencies, and they didn't fall into one of those three branches, yada, yada, yada? That's where it comes from. And so you have an oath of office, which is that you're going to follow the Constitution, you're going to follow the oath of office, which is to enforce the laws that you're mandated to follow. That includes the Fifth and 14th Amendment when it comes to due process, and when it comes to, oh, this conflicts with private property rights, I've heard many times over the years. Can you name anything that local government does, any government agency does, that does not affect private property rights? If they repair the road in front of my driveway, that affects my value of my property, taxes, et cetera. So that doesn't count. You've got a rule, you've got to follow it, and the, and the rule actually provides you some discretion, because it says like-for-like. So you can interpret what's like-for-like, but doesn't mean you're going to set it apart. And when it comes to giving testimony, if someone says that from my experience, Andrew, Anderson windows are great products, they're, they're very efficient, and they're going to add to the value, you've got a choice. You're going to be a hearing officer, or you're going to be a witness. You can't be both. Now, administrative officers can take administrative notice, just like a court can take judicial notice, but that's on facts that are generally wide known. That's, that's in the book. Like you say, the census report says the population of Sacramento is blank. That's, that's an example. But not to say that a product which I can bring in witnesses, which will tell you, nope, Anderson is not the best, and your valuation of property value is not what it's at. What I would urge you to do, because we've only got three minutes, maybe three and a half.
You're pushing it already. I'm letting you finish, so you can wrap up your thoughts soon.
Really, please, you can get, you can get hearings on the community. You don't have to wait for a grand jury report, or Pierre, someone to make the record. You can have a hearing to find out, how do you use those guidelines? How should they be administered? Find out about administrative law. Call up the deans of the local law schools, and they'll give you help on creating procedural rules to follow. That's my suggestion. It would save some time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public have a comment on a non-agendized item for the evening? Okay, seeing no one approach the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to written communications. Mr. Rivas, do we have any written communications tonight?
We have none this evening.
Okay. And do we have any presentations or educational workshops?
We have none this evening.
Okay, so we will move on to Item 10, our environmental assessments and public hearings, and our public hearing tonight is for 3084 Sacramento Street, Site Plan Review 22-01. Mr. Rivas, do you have the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This request is under Site Plan Review 22-02. This is a request, it's made by Teresa and Alan Heine, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and they're in the audience this evening, regarding their property at 3084 Sacramento Street, which is also Highway 49, located in the southwest corner of Sacramento Street and Chamberlain Street. The site is located within the city's Sacramento Street-Chamberlain Street Historic Residential District. Note that there are two residences on the subject property. This request is in regards to the home located at the southerly end of the property. The home was built in 1880. The other house, which is adjacent to it, just to the north, was built in 1934, and is not a subject of this request. The request is involving four basic items. The first item is to install new vertical board and batten siding over the existing horizontal wood lap siding, and over the existing board and batten siding located below grade, which is the garage or a basement. The vertical board and batten is also proposed, and would be the remainder of the house above grade. The second component is to replace six existing wood single-hung windows with vinyl single-hung windows. We don't have the specifications for those windows. They haven't been provided, but they are, they have currently been installed. Number three would be replacement of the rain gutters, and staff has no comment on those. They look same-for-same from staff's perspective. And then the fourth item is, they will repaint the entire house, to be painted cottage white, with door and gutters painted Dynasty Marquee Black. And the applicant did provide colored chips there on the, on the dais, so you can take a look at those colors. This request is before the Planning Commission, because when there are exterior alterations to a building that have been made to a structure located within a city historic district, the alterations and the alterations would be visible from a public street per city code that requires a planning commission to review and approve before a building permit may be issued. And the subject house is basically clearly visible from Sacramento Street, Chamberlain Street, and Chapel Street. The criteria the commission must use in evaluating modifications to a building located within an historic district is per city code 10-4-10B, and these are the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings, as we just call it SOI standards, and the City of Placerville Development Guide. Staff finds that the request, as analyzed and as modified, could be found consistent with the general plan design element, can be found compliant with the 10 Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and can be found consistent with the Site Plan Review criteria, with the applicable guidelines within the city's development guide, as modified by the recommendation, by the recommended conditions of approval. So in summary, I'm going a little bit more detail. Regarding the exterior siding of the house, the proposal to install new vertical board and batten siding over the existing horizontal wood lap siding above grade, above level of the home, and install new vertical board and batten siding over the existing vertical board and batten on the lower level, which is the garage and basement. So staff would find that this change, and this is more respect to the above grade, staff would find that this change would not meet the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings, the city's development guide, or the applicable city code, and would not be consistent with the city's general plan. But the replacement of the board and batten on below grade portion of the home would be found, could be found consistent. Two, with regards to the windows. The request is to replace six wood single-hung windows with vinyl single-hung windows. The staff would find that this also does not meet the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, since the replacement of the windows has already occurred, and staff does not know the condition, or for that matter, the status of the original windows. Staff will defer on the Planning Commission to make the findings of consistency based on testimony that would be provided by the applicant. Regarding the replacement of the rain gutters, staff would find the replacement of the rain gutters consistent with the SOI standards. And then number four, paint the entire house cottage white, with doors and gutters be painted Dynasty Marquee Black. Staff would find that the chosen colors to be consistent with the city's development guide. Staff finds that the proposed work, with the possibility of the exception of replacement windows, and certainly the replacement of the horizontal wood lap siding with vertical board and batten on the upper level above grade portion of the house exterior, would diminish the historic integrity of the district and would not complement the site and surrounding area, unless amended to require that the horizontal lap siding be replaced with the same. Notwithstanding, the applicant's stated in the application, there, I guess there's four different styles that exist, and it's kind of a mismatch, but staff would consider this to be, would allow for the full replacement. Consistent siding would rectify this condition and provide for uniformity. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission make, take the following actions. One, make the findings contained in Attachment C and conditionally approve the Site Plan Review subject to the conditions of approval provided as Attachment D. Staff did receive one com, one written comment today via email from Kathy Lishman, and a hard copy has been provided to the commission on, that's before you, prior to the meeting. That concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for staff on the report that you received? No? Seeing none, I will go ahead and open the public hearing up to the applicant to approach the podium to address your application.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mr. Rivas, my name is Teresa Heina, and, you know, we're, we are just here to answer any questions. I do want to point out that the, you know, we've owned these homes for probably at least a dozen years. I had some confusion about the, about the map. It was my oversight to, that we actually began the work, you know. My husband has been a builder, a designer builder, for 40 years, and we've done a lot of work in a lot of counties. And so I can say that in a lot of counties, Sacramento County, that we have done a lot of work in the Planning Commission for simply, and if it, if it were a tear-off, that would be one thing, but this was really just kind of an overlay. It started out as just an overlay on the south side, where the sun kind of beats on that side of the house. But regardless, I was born in Placerville. I was born at Marshall Hospital. I, you know, I should have known. It was just my oversight. So I'm going to let Alan take any, you know, maybe fill in a little bit more about the design. And I do want to also thank Mr. Rivas for the, for meeting with us, I, yeah, and for your assistance, so, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thanks again, Mr. Rivas. Yeah, just to echo some of the things that my wife had said, when we purchased this home, one of the visits that I made was actually to the city offices, and I did speak directly with Andrew Painter. And at that time, it must have been a misunderstanding on my behalf, because Mr. Rivas did point out documentation that said that, but we were told that this borders historic society, but is BP-zoned, and so he is going to list it on what they call the site profile as BP with, with housing use, is what he said. Because BP is business professional, not necessarily housing use specifically. I, we were unaware that this was actually a historic building. Now, but I would like to address to you why what we're offering to do is actually a far better solution. There are four different types of siding on that house. None of them equal any age of historic quality, and someone had, before we purchased the home, had cut out a door and completely recited other siding where they did not even match up, and left it untrimmed above. And then there's a hodgepodge of trimmed defects and problems with the outside of this home. The, the water table below the two different sidings, you have a vertical T&amp;G 1x6 along the skirt of the home, and the rest of the home was a hodgepodge that did not line up, some seven-inch, some four-inch. It was a mixed match of siding. Well, we're, the reason why we chose board and batten as a solution, two really important reasons. One, that we can put cellular insulation on the outside of the home, water-tight it yet again, place over it true 38's rough-sawn plywood, and then put the battens on, and this would give two, two beneficial things for the home. One, strengthen it, insulate it, and it will match a property right across the street, which is board and batten. And this would be, as far as we can see, nothing but an improved facelift for this property sitting out there right along 49, and it would be consistent. Board and batten was right down city street here, installed as early as 1819 on various storefronts and houses. And back then, when board and batten was used, it was a raw material. The painting effect that happened with board and batten came after paints were being used, and so we see this, but the original board and batten was just sawn timber and boards put on it. So it is a modernization of board and batten, which you see nowadays, which is painted. I would also say that I have drove, and after we realized we were in this process, I drove up Chamberlain and took a look at other buildings that clearly have been permitted and remodeled, and there was one home at 795, I believe it was on Chamberlain. They retained the cornice that was around the home, which is a historic feature, but they allowed hardy board, no, actually, vinyl siding with vinyl corners to be placed on there, which would be nothing like-for-like what board and batten with true wood would look like. True wood has the appearance of true wood. Vinyl, it, you can see it from, as soon as you turn the corner. So even though those features may have been horizontal, they're nothing like the appearance of what this would end up being. This is certainly going to be more rough-sawn timber with rough-sawn condition on the outside, board and batten. outside, board and batten appearance. I am a designer for 40 years. I've built some incredible homes, and I've done some incredible remodels. And I can assure you that my eye for this is actually spot on. Now, if we wanted to go through this whole process and run horizontal siding, I would ask that you would grant me the same thing that you've allowed other people to do up the street, because to buy any form of teardrop siding would probably be individually milled with that kind of look. And which one of the four are you going to have me do? Because there literally, there's four different sidings on that home. It's just, when it, when it was repaired, they just put up whatever they had. And I think this is the beautiful time to give this thing a facelift that's continuous, that's still architecturally historic looking, and it finishes everything. As far as the vinyl windows go, that house up there too, on 795, there was vinyl windows installed there. The reason why we had to install these windows immediately, two of them became non-operational in bedrooms, and I can't have tenants possibly dying because they can't get out a window. And that's the reason why that had to be done immediately. And had I known it was historic, I promise I would have been in for an application, but we just felt that we needed to move ahead with that, and we truly apologize for that error. We're hoping that you see the, that this is a good, this is a good proposal, a good project, and so we don't have to start over again. It would be, I think this would look, oh, there's one other thing. The two really true ornate historic features are left on this home. The two Dutch eyebrows, which are on the front and the back. And that's kind of what, when you drive through the front of that, you'll see those shingled conditions. Those are going to be retained just as they are. We're going to clean them up though a little bit. They look a little ragged. They need some help. And if there's any questions I could answer at this point, I'd be glad to do.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I have a question, but first I'd like to go to staff, if I could. Pierre, the historic district aside, remove and replacement of windows, does that require a building permit?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So to the applicant, please come back to the podium. I didn't catch your name.
Alan.
Alan?
Yeah, Alan.
So Alan, I'm, did you start this work with a building permit?
No, I did not.
Okay. So I'm, you've been in the business for quite some time, I think. I would expect that you would have known that a building permit would have been required.
Actually, I'm going to tell you folks the truth. Sacramento County, if I'm changing one or two windows, I've literally called them and told them, do I need to come in and get a permit for that? No. But if you want to do a full built, a set of windows, come on in. But if you're just changing out a window hole and putting it back, they don't want a permit.
Okay.
And then, so this is what we, this is honestly what I used as a guideline to, you know, see one or two windows, we didn't think was going to be an issue. The two that needed to be replaced were the fire hazard ones, and we found out also the tenant had brought in some reptile cages with heaters in them, and so that really became an issue.
We also include this.
Oh, yeah. And after we met with Mr. Rivas and we realized we had made this mistake, we were only going to do the one side of the home and bring it to the front. And Mr. Rivas and his considerations about what we're doing, he asked if we would be willing to go around the whole place, and so now we have allotted the additional money to wrap the whole house and really bring the whole thing up to storage, I mean to architectural condition. And again, we apologize for that oversight. It's, again, like I pulled countless permits. I could show you, you know, eight homes in Cameron Park and five homes in Elrod Hills that I've built, designed and built. And so I don't have a problem pulling permits. I don't, it's not an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner List?
The, you pointed out there's seven different styles of siding on the house. The side of the house that faces Chamberlain.
Chamberlain, yes.
When was that redone?
It was done when we were there. We had nothing, we don't know when these things were done.
So it was done before you bought the property?
Yeah, everything that you see on that home before we started making the repairs of the windows was all as it was.
Okay. So the window shades above the windows, they weren't there, or they were there?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
You mean the metal corrugated, yes, those were there.
Okay. Now, looking at the front of the house, you have horizontal siding that is set back from the front of the porch. May I ask why you didn't use that same, you said there's seven different ones. I can understand, let's get rid of, let's get rid of six of them. And here, one side of the house, the siding seems to be in good, in good condition. It's back away out of, out of weather, and you're proposing to take that down and put reverse batten board on that?
No, not take anything down. That's the thing that we don't want to do.
Okay, but that's, that's my point. Why not replicate the siding that's on the front and make it look like the historical house that it is?
The siding on the front, I don't even know if it is available. I have to look at the pictures, but I believe that's the cove teardrop that is something like eight inches.
Right.
And it has a cove in it. So it's, it's a special milled product. And once again, I would go back to saying, if we would be-
And you, you looked into a price on that, so you have, you know how expensive it is or not expensive?
I could, I, no, I have not looked at a price currently, but I know what it used to be when I used to do remodels down in the Fab 40s and we were trying to-
See, that's, that's one of the things with historical district that you buy into, is that you want to keep it as historical as possible, not hysterical, historical. Okay? And, and so we're looking, I'm looking at the front of this, I'm going, wow, it would really be, it would really be spectacular if, if the sides of that house look like the front. Now, I'm assuming that, and I didn't walk the whole property, I'm assuming that some of that side, that same siding that's on the front matches on the other, on one of the other faces. It looks like on the north elevation, there's a window, and that same siding is on part of that. So my question is, I think you're taking the easy way out by going to the reverse batten board.
Well, it's not an easy way out. It's, it's a very expensive way out, because it's, that board, the boards that we're buying, each one of those battens are $16 apiece.
I understand.
So it's not, it's not inexpensive. And the rough sawn plywood is $67 a sheet.
But to this piece of property, this house, that is not consistent what was there originally. And that's what we're trying to keep in a historical district, is that feel that this is what was here, ergo, that's what we have now.
Okay. Well, not to argue with you, but if you've seen the side of that home and the other side of the home, you will see that there are different, on the one side that's facing inward, two different sidings that don't, first of all, match up. And then on the side that, which is where the dangerous windows were that needed to be replaced, those were three different sidings right there that didn't, please. So you're saying that you would want us to tear, leave that on there, but go, go over that with new siding that was the most expensive at the front of the home, which would cost me maybe $100 a board? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you admitted you don't know what the price is. Okay, so we don't know-
Well, I can tell you to mill anything.
Well-
No, seriously, may I say this? I, I know what things cost. To take what would be poplar lumber, because that's what they're going to use, and mill it to run to match something, each one of those links, they're going to cost me $100 at least, at minimal. And I, if you want, I'll bring you back a quote.
Well, I-
You know? And that's if I can even get it done.
And that's why I said, it looks like on one of the sides of the house, it must be the north side, over, looks like part of it, if not even half of it, has the same siding on the front. Is that not correct?
I don't think it's the same actual profile, but there is an appearance similarity of the old cove. In other words, the curved cove that hangs over the siding, yes.
Yeah, I've, I've installed it. I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. And that's what I was saying is, if that portion could be saved, that's saving you money. Then you look at the rest of it, what has to be done? Okay? It's, it's quite obvious to me, driving the backside on Chamberlain, that that was done without a permit. Okay? Now, I know you didn't do that. That was done before you got there, because that too would, would come into question if it had been brought before the planning commission.
Okay. When we bought the home, we checked the current permits. Andrew Painter showed us the current permits. They have two permits on file. So where the home was and the condition it was in is exactly the way it was before we began, okay?
Okay, I'm not-
So I just want to be consistent here.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to propose that you redo the western side of your house. Okay? That's, that's not my question. My question is, are we going to keep this house as close to what it looked like in the 1880s as possible? Okay? And I'm wondering with, with the reverse batten board, if that is, if that really is, is true? Even though, yes, I know they have used it in, in different areas. Okay? And we have no way of knowing that house that you're talking about up the road, if that was, a permit was pulled on that or not. Okay? I cannot remember in the eight years I've been on the commission that that, that particular house was, ever came before us to be recited, and it's within the historical, historical district.
Every, not, every home that I drove off up through there, except for some of the new additions, and I'm not sure if they were borderlining the historic conditions, have dilapidated garages that are, okay, and inconsistent sidings all through it. I took pictures of at least 12 homes that have T111 on one side, horizontal siding on the other, and some with vinyl siding, some windows being inconsistent. And we thought, even on this home, there were two windows that had upper slats, panes. These were old rope style windows with weights. Those failed, and the panes, the molins just began to fail as well. And then there were others that were replaced previously, not by us, that were, one side had a vinyl window, one side had two wood windows with different type of sass details that were just strictly horizontal. So this whole place is inconsistent. I would say, no offense, as a 40-year designer, it would be a mistake for us to only do the minimal to try to match that historic siding, and to come around to the front of it and leave it like that, when you could have a fresh new appearance on the whole thing, blend properly, and be a gem to the local community right there especially, because there's a lot of homes there that could use an updated home next to them that still had historic quality to it. We would, we would bow out of doing that entirely. I'd just pull the siding off and leave it, because we can't, we cannot afford what you're asking us to do. We would not even engage in it. If you wanted to say that we could put hardy siding, like you've allowed at 795 Chamberlain, or something to that nature that has a wood appearance, we'd be glad to do it, but we would just withdraw all the application and leave it with the hodgepodge ugly condition that it's in, put it right back how it was, because it's just, it's burdensome. It would be, we don't have the money to put into that. You're talking about probably $20,000 in wood alone, and we're, we just, just unreasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners have a question?
Yes, I had a question as well.
A little more, sorry.
Sorry. I just had a question related to the windows. I do know that you said that two of the windows were at a state where they could no longer be opened.
Yes.
But it does look like you're looking to replace six windows, not two.
Yes.
So I was wondering what the condition is of the other four windows.
The, the other four windows were all in bad condition. Yeah, all of them are in bad condition, the one, the wood windows that were in the home, and two of the operation, but it didn't matter that they didn't operate as well, because they're not in a bedroom. Two of them are at the front, in the living room, so the need of that from a fire safety issue is not nearly as bad as it is in a bedroom. It has to be an operable window. And so we wanted to do that, and that required two windows on that side of the home that had to be replaced, for sure. So that's why we put those in right then. And that was the, the emphasis to say, wow, we got to do something about this. And like I said, we went into the home and found that they had these reptilian cages in there with heaters. I was just going, oh my gosh, you know, we got to do something here.
Okay. Thank you.
So you've already replaced all six windows?
No, we have not.
No, you have not replaced all six.
No.
You've replaced two?
Just two windows, yes.
Two windows, and you're looking to replace four more for an addition, for a total of six?
Yes.
Okay.
And only, and only because we've changed the scope now. Instead of just going around to the front of the home, after speaking with Mr. Rivas at the offices, that comment was made, well, are you going to consider wrapping the whole home? And wife and I went home, we looked at her budget to see if we could actually do that, and we, even though it's a little tight, we're, we, we could make it happen. I'm sorry to sound combative about the milling going down to, because the only place I know that I used to get it was down in Sacramento. Zetzer Molding used to do that kind of stuff, but these off runs, they just don't make them. Unless you can find it online nowadays, it's, you're just literally going to have to get someone to bring in new knives or cut new knives and then make a run for you. And when they set up a run, it's, it's highly expensive. And I could see if this was what you would require for what would be either a replica or an actual historic replacement. But historic, I didn't realize this guideline was going to be this stringent, and please drive up Chamberlain and look at what I know the city has allowed to happen, and see if what this project is, is not a clear improvement to what has already been previously approved and allowed. I think you'll see, and again, this, this is my expertise on the design effort. I can tell you that. I can show you plenty of properties we've done that, you know, they look great from the street, they meet the guidelines, and anyway.
Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, so just for clarification, because actually I came to this meeting with the understanding, incorrect though it appears to be, that all the windows had already been replaced. But I'm reading from the staff report on page two, bottom paragraph. The home's front door is centered with single hung windows replaced on either side, and then three double hung windows have been replaced in the south elevation. So that's five. Are there more windows that are to be replaced? How, how many more windows are to be replaced at this point?
There's a total of six.
More?
No, six total, six total.
So five out of six have been replaced already, according to the staff report. Now, maybe the staff report's not correct, I'm just trying to get clarity.
He did the two in the front?
You see where I'm at, Pierre?
Yeah. The two in the front, the two in the front may have been replaced.
It was staff's, staff's impression that the two windows on the east elevation were replaced, the front of the house.
But not by, but not by the applicant necessarily? Before you bought the house, or did you do-
No, no, those, those had to be done. I will check with our nephew.
Okay, but you, you have, you have not done that work.
I did not do the work.
Just the two on the south side for the tenants for safety?
Right.
Gotcha.
But the two in the front, I don't know if that one was in a bedroom or not. I can't be sure now at this point.
All right. So there's a little bit of confusion on that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, it was staff's impression that there were three windows that were replaced on the south elevation. Again, I could be wrong, but, I mean, I didn't actually go in there and look super closely at the windows, but it looked like they were reframed and put in and with the, you know, sealer and everything was in- sealer and everything was in there, just like the two in the front. But I'll defer to the applicant.
Yeah. One of the windows was, the trim around it was basically rotted, and pulled that one off and put new flashing around it. But if the two in the front are replaced, my apologies, let me see.
There were only these two windows that were going to get replaced.
They're saying that these two might have been replaced too. I honestly can't tell you for certain if the, and my, when we left the job, you know, I'll check, it's my nephew, so, you know, he'll let us know, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I can drive by and look, too.
Yeah, if staff, Madam Chair, if staff could comment. I took a picture with my phone when I actually did a site visit, and the stickers are in the windows, on both windows in the west elevation. So not to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, that's all right.
But yeah, it looks like the windows had the manufacturer of the new window still in the window.
On the west side?
On the east side, the side looking the front of the house.
Okay. So the front, okay.
Yeah, if you want to, you're more than welcome to look at my.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. No, so the one window is in the same bedroom than, that has two bedrooms? And if you look, refer to your elevation, right there, the one window that was replaced, okay? And then right around the corner of that is yet another window, so that's in that bedroom. And so that's probably why that was replaced, and that's the only thing I can figure. The other one next to it is in a separate bedroom, refer to elevation lower.
The south elevation?
Yes. You see the two windows there, the single hungs? Now, if you go to the front above, that one there is in the same bedroom.
Oh, okay.
So that's, and I was thinking two, and, yeah.
So from staff's perspective, staff would say, and again, and I apologize, I'm looking at a photograph on my phone, I can clearly see that three windows have been replaced. They still have the manufacturer's stickers in the window on the south elevation, the one that's being recited. And then on the east elevation, we have two windows that have been replaced. So for a total of five that I could see.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, I'll go ahead and have you take a seat, and we'll let you know if we have more questions. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment portion of this public hearing. This is a time for members of the public to comment on the application at hand. Do any members of the public wish to address the commission? Thank you. So you have three minutes.
Again, I'm Chris Payne. I'm past president of the Eldorado County Historical Society, 17 years, so I've been around a long time. I recognize also, having been involved with the city of Placerville, that you, I believe you have four residential historic districts. And at one time, they were going to be looking at Main Street, the commercial side, they even had, the impression was that they were going to go through with that, but at some, some decision was made about Main Street, and it wasn't turned into a historic district. And that's the way we are right now. I did want to say to this couple, recognizing their experience in building, that restoration is not remodeling, and it's not new construction. Restoration typically is more expensive. And going in, if they would have recognized how strongly we've been in terms of our historic districts here, and also recognizing the view of other buildings that may have happened, does not make this particular project different in terms of their responsibility. The only thing I could say also about what they're proposing is it should be consistent with the historic district that it's in. If we say that it is, then everybody's happy. If it's not, then certainly I would question the logic, even to the point of something being unsafe. I'm not sure how long they've owned this building, but certainly it doesn't matter. Restoration does cost more, and they need to restore it in such a way as it's going to be consistent with the ordinance that is in place. That's my personal feeling. Also, I'm a retired civil engineer, so I know how costly it can be, and how expensive things can be, especially right now. So thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate your comment. Do any other members of the public wish to address the commission on this topic? Yes, come on up.
Yeah, thank you, Ruth Michelson again. I do have compassion for the applicants. I do feel badly for whatever it was they were said long ago, but, you know, it's somewhat hearsay, and it'd be good if they had something like that in writing. But regardless of that issue, and maybe they do, that'd be great, had they pulled a permit, this is the compounding problem, is I would, a builder has to know that each county is different. And I heard what he had to say, and I can appreciate it. But when you pare it all down, work was done without a permit. And I'm guessing maybe they were busted, or else they wouldn't be here. I don't know how it came to be that they're here today. But had he come in to get the permit, he certainly would have found out what the current correct situation is with this house, regardless of what he was told or not told the many years ago. And the fact that there is, and I haven't driven Chamberlain, I haven't driven to see this house, but I believe what he's saying is that there's a mishmash, which is unfortunate, which means other people did work without permits, or the planning commission wasn't consistent, or who knows? I don't know. I'm not going to do the research to find out. But that's not really reason to say, since there were wrongdoings in the past, hey, let's just let it go. And the last thing I want to say is, and I don't really, I'm a little bit speaking out of my scope, but there's an appearance, I mean, Chris talked about restoration, and it is more expensive, and I believe that that's true. But if we're trying to reach some type of compromise with this applicant, and I do believe him that runs of, having runs of specific types of wood board is very expensive, I've been in that situation myself. But can the look be replicated of the horizontal board with something of lesser expense? And does that meet the criteria of this, Pierre, Mr. Rivas, the historic, whatever you referenced, that it needs to fall within the requirements of? When you were reading your staff report, you said this would not meet the.
The Secretary of Interior standards?
Thank you, the Secretary of Interior standards. Can something that gives the appearance but isn't exactly the material, does that meet the standards, or does it have to be literally wood? Do you see what I'm saying? Can it be something, and so we can look at the house, and it's not wrapped in plywood? Because, okay, that would be a fresh appearance, but we're not looking for a brand-new, fresh appearance, we're looking for something that fits in with a historic district. In some other neighborhood, a fresh appearance, is my three minutes up?
Yes, thank you. You can finish your thought, if you, okay.
Well, yeah, I don't need to repeat it, I think I made myself clear.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your comment. Members of the public, okay, great, come on up.
Kirk Smith, just for some continuity, if, it doesn't matter whether it's vinyl or wood, because double-pane windows that are conforming to current standards are available in all kinds of combinations. I brought some literature to all of you, I guess, a couple of years ago. You can get it at Home Depot, Diamond Lumber, they manufacture it in wood, but those are not historic in appearance, which is the standard Ruth was referring to, like for like. Those are not like. They're two-sectioned windows, presumably you pull up and down. I didn't know that there was going to be a dispute or questions about how many windows, but I can tell you, because I've lived on that hill for 75 years, and I admit, I didn't look at this particular house in the context of this case until maybe a few days ago. But I drive by it all the time, and all the windows on the south side, which means up towards the hill, are new. And you can see the stickers on them from the manufacturer, and they are the kind which are in two sections. If you're looking for windows that will allow you to escape, which is of course important, those double-pane windows are made that way, they have them available. So that is out there. The entire south side is brand-new. I would not describe it as siding, it's probably the kind of shearing that you put on before you put on siding. I, again, empathize, because I've been in the same shoes that they have been, and I can't dispute the issue of the lumber, because we all know the price has gone up. I certainly saw it the other day at the depot. I did two things that are similar to what's described. Mr. Hines talked about teardrop. Mr. Voss calls it horizontal board and batting, I prefer the term he's used. It's where you have two pieces of wood, they're like slats, maybe two or three inches, and they're overlapping. And in the early days, a century ago, whenever this building was done, or mine was done 100 years ago, each board was put on individually. That's expensive. But as he said, they're milled. However, when my contractor, Robert Plank, came in and did it, had a company that already had it milled. So what's great is it saved us money, because you don't put in one strip at a time, you put like a 10-inch, 12-inch, whatever it was, in that's already milled. So it saves money. And it provides the same insulation qualities, because ours is up to standard, we pulled permits, it has the code requirements, all that fiberglass was stuffed in there, so it can be done. One suggestion, since this is a learning experience for lots of folks, is they can come back, continue it, and they get a chance to do the research and find out what's available. But it certainly was available when my building was done, I can't imagine it not being done. As for the plywood business, I had that done for another structure, it was not historic, but I wanted it to look historic. So it's big sheets of plywood, and then you come in, you put the slats, imitation batting over it, and it looks like historic board and batting. It's cheaper, looks nice.
If you could go ahead and wrap up your comments, it's past three minutes.
Yeah, it belonged to Joe and Marie Hines in the 50s and 60s when I, when they were there. And the front, I remember as having lattice work, which no longer is permitted by itself because bugs and insects and embers go through. But what you can do when it's on the side is you have plywood that's painted black, and then you put the lattice work, it looks the same. I only looked at the south side, but it is not, it's more than, it's at least three windows, and none of it, and all of it's new.
Okay.
Come back.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Yes?
Can we address just a couple things that were said that were inconsistent about the information?
Yeah, go ahead and come on.
Sorry.
No, 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 it's okay.
First of all, what he had just said a minute ago, thank you, was that we are indeed, our proposal is to use wood siding behind and put batts over it, so it is a true rendition of what board and batten looks like. And this is not teardrop siding, this is a coved teardrop over the edge of additional siding. And that coving, the knives to cut those are not what you call a general run. When that stuff was being used, he could buy it all everywhere. But it's just not being used, the exposure is like a 1-inch exposure, larger exposure, and it's, that wraps around the corner, and then it jumps off to a slightly different profile that's misaligned, and then yet another siding on that side. When you go around the corner, there's neither one of them are exact, but they're more of the flat kind of siding that just basically lap, almost like a T and G, that's what that is on the other side. If you wanted to suggest a horizontal run of siding that was of a reasonable solution for us, that we could get, we would be glad to do that. But we would truly just have to bow out of this. I can't replace the windows from an egress and ingress size. The rope windows were wider on the side for the rope pockets, and that egress-ingress cannot even met trying to duplicate that window. I would have to go to a wider window, which would be a single hung, and it's going to be pretty much like the vinyl appearance, like these are, that are white, because we're just going to paint them white if they were wood windows. So I don't know if now we're getting down to a materials issue, and once again, please drive up Chamberlain and show me one permit that you've released where you haven't allowed vinyl windows being used. Because I don't see the strictness that is being asked for here, but if that's what it's going to do, we honestly just have to bow the project, we'll go back and put, we will spend the money to put the wood windows back, but I'm going to make them ingress and egress, and we're going to take the siding off, paint the house. We'll ask that you let us paint it, and leave it at that, because I cannot run that mill. And also, I would be replacing over the top of it. I don't want to be pulling siding and taking that water membrane that's obviously been working well, because the house isn't leaking, and disturb the inside of the home. That's a big tear-off. We don't want to do that. What we're offering, you may be upset at the fact that you think we're trying to pull something on you, but as soon as I met Diane Palmer, she said, I need you at the building department this morning, and boy, I was there. So we did try to follow up with this. And we'd be interested in doing a horizontal siding, we'll take all the wood back that we bought, and get some sort of refund, and start over with a horizontal, probably six-inch profile, I would suggest, five and a half, and go for that. I could redo the drawings and show all horizontal siding on there. But we would ask that you don't force us into go run a new mill and get knives cut to cut that cove detail in the front. That would be pretty much the end of our project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, are there any other members of the public wishing to address the commission on this topic? Seeing don't want to approach the podium, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing, and bring the matter back to commissioners for discussion and action. Any thoughts to start the discussion?
I'll go ahead and start. So we established these ordinances to protect our historic districts, and our ordinances are quite clear in my mind to, that we need to follow the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. And there's two items on this that are not compliant with that. One is the windows, replacing wood windows with vinyl windows. And the other is replacing horizontal wood siding with batten board siding. There's specifics in here, such as adding conjectural features or elements from other historic properties will not be undertaken. So the fact that there's other historic properties with batten board siding does not mean that it can be used on this property. So my stance is sort of that we really just need to comply with our ordinance, which I think is quite clear in the Secretary of Interior standards, related to that.
To Commissioner Gutberg, are there any exceptions, or variances, or allowances in the Secretary of Interior's guidelines?
Not that I know of, you could ask staff, but I have not seen any.
I'll actually read it.
Okay.
And all the guidelines are prefaced with, "The standards will be applied, taking into consideration the economic and technical feasibility of each project. In my view, there is evaluation by this body and by the council. And despite the opinion of some that, you know, we're deviating from standards, they are both standards and guidelines, and the arguments I heard earlier were entirely unpersuasive." Having said that, I'm, just to start the discussion, I'm very unhappy with the fact that a permit wasn't pulled, particularly by an individual who I think should have known better.
known better. I just have, I'll just say, and just, I think that just speaks for itself. The other thing that I'm really unhappy with is the fact that with the work having been done, all that I'm left to do here is kind of like rubber stamp it. Okay? Well, it's already been done, so what do we do? I'm of the inclination to take the applicant up on his offer to pull out all the vinyl windows and put the wood ones back. I really am at that point. Okay? Then an application could be brought back to us for our consideration. Okay? So having vented that, okay, I do think there's a very, in fact, he actually got into the technical consideration as the standards and guidelines refer to with the windows that require the weights and the structure of those windows. And so I think some very careful deliberation needs to happen here. I think it's very clear that replacing like-for-like, as the guidelines would require, approaches cost-prohibitiveness. So then what do we do with the allowance for the economical consideration? So my point is, these things aren't black and white. Some people think they're absolutely black and white, and we can simply beat people over the head with them. I am not of that persuasion. Okay? We do have to consider. We do have to evaluate. And then we do have to make recommendations, and any justification we find, that goes back to my point in the minutes about findings. If we're going to make an exception, it needs to be clearly articulated. It should be well reasoned. It should be defensible for council if council needs to defend an appeal or evaluate an appeal. That's our responsibility. And our responsibility is not to rubber stamp the ordinance nor rubber stamp an application, either way. We are to evaluate each application on its merits and problems. And that's what I think that we do. And I think we do a pretty good job of it. Now, having said that, I really don't know where to go with this project, with this application, because I am concerned. And Commissioner Gutberg, I don't mean to be disrespectful. I do support the guidelines. I do want to preserve our historic districts. I think the variation that we've seen, and the windows are the worst, frankly. And I'm going to ask staff to ask council to set up a joint meeting with commission and council, open to the public, so that we can deal with, we can have a workshop on the standards and guidelines, and specifically with the windows. The windows seem to be like 90% of our challenges in these applications. Windows and window awnings, I think, if I recall correctly. And we really need to get some clarity on this and talk about all these things, including the technical and economical aspect. So I'm going to be quiet at this point and then see where things go.
Okay. Well, I'll jump right in. Nicole, in all due respect, you know, I actually share Michael's viewpoint. The difficulty we have with these Secretary of the Interior standards is that those are the guidelines that, that's all that really is out there. You know, we have had, we watched a video of a workshop that was given a few years ago that, for me, I learned a lot from that about how to apply these standards. And they are standards, they are guidelines, and they aren't a strict law. The thing about the SOI standards is those were developed to protect what was, you know, identified as a historic resource. And unfortunately, and it says, you know, right in our staff report, this particular building is not listed as a historic resource, yet it sits in our historic district. So, you know, Michael, that's where I agree with you. It's our responsibility to find fairness and apply the standards as we see fit, based on our experience. And, you know, that's why we're up here. So I feel, I truly believe that there is some latitude here in applying these standards. Since this is not a listed historic resource, you know, we kind of went around this two weeks ago, again, in historic district, something, you're not rehabilitating things on the inside so that it is exactly a replica of what has always existed for a long period of time to achieve that historic resource definition. So, you know, looking for my notes here, just a second, you know, it's our job to make sure that the historic character is retained, and our ordinance says, "From the street." We're not, again, we're not sitting inside, and we feel like we're in a house of that particular vintage. You know, there's allowances for that. But what I read, our ordinance says, at the time, you know, the city was trying to protect how things appear as you walk by, as you drive by. And so to me, it is a material change to take this particular structure from a horizontal style siding to the vertical board and batten as the applicant has proposed. So I feel that condition of approval number one on attachment D, it just says generally, let's go with horizontal wood lap siding. I think it's lap siding. Maybe that's a typo, L-A-P for L-A-B. That, I think, is really important to retain. I don't see that it's important for the owners to go to the expense, the difficulty of obtaining material that has that teardrop cove that was described, and you can see that in the pictures, especially for, in the front. That is, it would be wonderful, yes, but, Michael, you pointed out, we don't want to disincentivize people from doing needed maintenance on their homes. So if it's not obtainable, I think the standard of going for, you know, like-for-like doesn't mean identical. In fact, if you read the standards, you can reproduce the feature. It just, the material has to reflect what was there. And, you know, we've had this discussion also. We're talking about having a replica versus ersatz, you know. I'm afraid that if we allowed something like vinyl, then you're getting down that path of an ersatz, you know, a Disneyland reproduction. We need to avoid that. Our ordinance, you know, we want this to be as similar as can be done. And I quite frankly think the conditions of approval number one, I think that strikes the right chord with replicating what was there and not changing the appearance of this house from the street. Now, I, we often talk about windows. And again, a single-hung window, whether it is vinyl or wood, from the street gives materially the same appearance. There was an applicant that came a couple of years ago now, I'm sorry, but in that one, I remember the, that had divided light wood windows. And this was something that Mr. Painter had, he'd written in his staff report, and he described that, you know, there actually is, there is a modern, I don't know if it was wood or composite, but you can get the divided-like, divided-light window as a replacement. So in his staff report, his recommendation was to go that direction, since the ones that were there, I don't think they could be repaired. But you see where I'm going. We're talking about something that looks materially the same, but it's affordable. It's not, you know, it's still not going to be cheap. We're not, we can't let that be our, you know, sole deciding factor, you know, can you get it anywhere? And I think someone who owns a historic home must realize that it's going to take a little bit more to maintain it and replace things, as opposed to someone who owns a more modern, something that's not in one of our historic districts. So from my viewpoint, I think allowing the vinyl window replacement, since it is from the street view, pretty much the same. I mean, I think you would have to get up right on it and operate it to even realize whether you had vinyl or wood. In this particular case, I think you're not changing the look of this particular structure. And the last note I wanted to make here is about fairness to all the applicants that come before us. Just two weeks ago, we allowed them to replace a wood, I think their single-hung windows were not operational, but again, they were going to come to staff with, you know, their samples and work out something that was compatible with the house. So again, to be fair to this applicant, I think we should, you know, allow for this change. But also, some time ago, we had another applicant, and I think this was on Coloma Street, where without permits, they had changed from, I believe they went from horizontal to board and batten, and it just, you know, it did not work. And so that applicant was forced to go back to, in fact, I think they may have even installed some of the original siding. They put the new underlayment under it and put back what was still useful or could be used from what they had. So we, you know, we forced them to keep the material, same material appearance from the street on that house. And so I think to be fair to that applicant and in light of this one, again, going with that same horizontal look is the best recommendation that we can do. So those are my thoughts at this time, and I'll turn it over to the rest of you.
Madam Chair, I had a question for Commissioner Keeney. With regards to the secondary structure, the board and batten, I think, was okay, right? We're going to allow board and batten for that secondary structure?
Exactly. That's in condition, number one. You're right. It says, it is the, it says, I also have an edit for that. Thank you for bringing that up, Michael. Lay over or replace existing horizontal wood lap siding. It says above grade, and I think we should just add above Sacramento Street grade so that we're clear on what we're talking about, because then it goes on to say, lay over or replace existing board and batten below grade. That's the, below Street grade is what we're talking about for the garage and basement. But, you know, as it exists, this house has mismatched horizontal siding, but it also has horizontal as well as the board and batten. So, yeah, I think that this condition of approval number one is well-written with the specification we're talking about. Sacramento Street is the grade, you know. Above that is horizontal, and below that, we're going to allow for the board and batten.
Yeah. Madam Chair, another question for staff or maybe commissioners, though. When did we adopt, when did the city adopt the Secretary of Interior standards? How long ago? Approximately?
There was, there was a evaluation of historic structures that was performed, an inventory, if you will, that was done in, I believe, 1984. And then following that inventory, then the city passed the ordinance, creating the four residential historic districts with the requirement for the Secretary of Interior standards.
I thought this, I thought the Secretary of Interior standards, the way they're written now, has come to us within like the last 10 years, we formally adopted it. I didn't think they were always in place. I thought we adopted them, certainly in my tenure as a commissioner.
Yeah, I kind of remember that.
Yeah, I thought it was formally. Is Mr. Smith in the, Mr. Smith would know. That's too bad. I'm pretty sure we, it's been within the last 10 years that we actually formally adopted them. And my point, my point to that is, A, people who bought homes in historic districts now all of a sudden find them subject to this, right? And how does that work? And is there any consideration for grandfathering? And then back to the suggestion that, you know, did planning commission, you know, approve projects that deviated from those standards? And I would say, well, it's quite possible those standards were not in place for the planning commission to apply them. So I don't think any kind of an assumption should be made as to what level of review was applied for those, so.
My comment would be this. Number one, I would hope that when people change out windows, that they will replicate what they have. Now, in replication, they can be made out of other materials. Okay? So you can buy a vinyl, and I've said this before, you can buy a vinyl window, single-hung vinyl window, that looks just like the single-hung wood window if you can't afford a wood window replacement. Okay? And I think we need to, we need to make sure that we're not asking for something that's going to break the bank. When I looked at this property, and I saw you wanted to put the vertical siding, the reverse batten board, I've used that on projects for well over 35, 40 years. It works very well. It'll look really nice. I would hope that the applicant would not change the siding on the front of the house. If it's in good shape, cleaned up, painted, it would give us the character on Sacramento Street. Okay? And so my recommendation would be that the front remain as it is. Now, dollars to donuts, you ply, you pull the plywood off of the railing across the front that I think is painted red, if I'm not mistaken. Okay? You'd find pickets. And so that's not original across there. Okay? That's their, that's their problem, not ours. Okay? But I would like to see the front of the house stay as it is, cleaned up, painted, repaired. The sides of the houses, if they're willing to do that, then I would go with the vertical board and bat. I'm not crazy about the plywood horizontal. I've seen applications of that. But remember, plywood comes in 8-foot and 10-foot sheets. So every 8-foot or 10-foot, you're going to have a vertical break. So how are you going to take care of that? And that's one of the problems that we have. I've worked on a lot of projects as a designer, where somebody will want to put a shed roof on a house, and I'll walk away from the project because it doesn't fit with the rest of the house. Okay? And the same thing with this. I want it to be a house that will look nice in the community, and I think if the front was cleaned up and painted, as I've stated, and the vertical siding painted, and the windows replaced to meet the egress, then I think we have a winner.
Is there, is there a hierarchy? Do the standards and guidelines call out a hierarchy? Though you mentioned replacement. I kind of think that the standard, the hierarchy standard is supposed to be repair, restoration before replacement, right? So again, and this gets back to why I really want to have the workshop with council on this, because I think, go ahead.
If I may, okay.
Yes, sir.
If I may, 1984, we were just coming into dual-pane windows. Okay? And so replacing a single-pane window with a single-pane window would be of like kind.
Totally agree.
So, okay. And vinyl wasn't around at that point. And then came in some real cheap vinyl, and thank goodness we didn't stick with that. Okay? But to your point, that's what it.
Right. So, and again, the other thing, and this has come up on more than one occasion, where we have to balance the environmental component, energy use and so on and so forth, right, with the standards and guidelines. And that's where I think, again, it becomes, it becomes a bit sticky. My question was really from my own edification, really not necessarily specific to what would we do with this project. But again, it's not clear to me. Here's the thing, and again, this is what I'm really unhappy with. I've been denied, I feel I've been denied as a commissioner the opportunity to ask questions. Well, can you restore, you know, you want to replace these windows, right? Can you restore them? Can they be repaired or restored before you go to replacement? But that has been taken away from me because most of the windows, if not all of them, have already been replaced. You follow what I'm saying? And so, and that gets back to the whole permitting thing. So I'm just really unhappy with everything, and I'm having a real, I'm having real trouble seeing my way clearly through this. So that's just kind of where I'm at. I'll get there at some point, but I'm not, I'm grumpy at the moment, just saying.
Okay. Sort of, yes.
Chair, no, go ahead, please.
I think, I'm really not clear on the extent of the replacement of the siding. Can we have the applicant come back up? I'd like to ask them to clarify that.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, if you can come on up.
Now, my question for you.
Alan Heine, honor.
Yeah. Is how extensive, you know, I read that your application said replace siding. You showed us the mismatched siding, and then on like the north side and the south side, it's already got the TIVC and so on. But are you proposing to replace siding?
But are you proposing to replace siding all over the house, or are you going to retain what's in the front?
Well, that's what was somewhat suggested to us when we spoke with Mr. Rivas, so that part of the issue was that the, it was just such a hodgepodge. And, like, imagine a door that had trim around it and didn't match up with the other siding. That's what this house, that's how we bought it, you know? And then, two dissimilar sightings, and then dissimilar aligned siding with a trim around it, and then that feeds into the actual-
So, it's your, your preference to replace the siding all around the-
Originally, we just wanted to do that side and the front, but since, you know, Mr. Rivas and, and the city was kind enough to allow us to jump back into this permit process, was trying to support us, the wife and I went back and looked at our numbers to see if we could wrap the whole house. And we thought, at that time, from a, from a energy standpoint, we're putting Tyvek right on top of the existing, because all of it is a flat profile at the end of the day. It is flat, even though there's a cove cornice on each one of those sightings that Mr., I'm sorry.
List.
Which Listz has said, it does end up being flat. So, when we put Tyvek and a cellular insulation over that, and then the 3/8 rough-sawn siding, and to answer your question, the only area where you would have a Z-bar is right there above that window on that side, and I think you have a similar condition directly opposed to it. But everything would be appearance of complete contiguous one-by-three battens. These are not, it's not a plywood with a, it's not a T-111. This is rough-sawn plywood with one-by-three battens on top of it, duplicating the historic original form of board and batten.
May, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
The siding across the front of the property on Sacramento, what is the condition of that siding right now?
It's been repainted, and it's, would require, I, I'm not sure if it has any soft spots, if it, it needs to be actually replaced, but if, if, if you wanted me to run a mill just for the front of that-
No, 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 I'm, I'm not asking that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to establish if we could repair the front, repaint, repair, bring it up to where it's decent. I don't think, from looking at it, there was any mismatch across the front.
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so let's take that one separate. If we can leave that the way it is, that's gonna save you money. Is that not correct?
Yeah, that would save us money.
Okay. Now, we're looking at the sides, okay? I'm, I'm okay with the vertical, because I don't personally like the horizontal, when it comes in four-by-eight sheets, because then you have a vertical line every eight-foot. And, you know-
Well, now, you see this, again, that the rough-sawn siding goes on, and it is just a flat rough-sawn, and then we're putting battens on top of that, so you won't see any lines.
But what they're talking about is a four-by-eight sheet with the eight-foot going horizontal, not, not vertical, okay?
Oh, no, yeah, we, you wouldn't want to put that stuff.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's not good. That doesn't look good. You can see that from the corner.
It, it doesn't replicate what, what you have, and that's, that's why I'm saying, probably in this case, what you have proposed with the re-sawn plywood and the bats would be the best solution for the north side and the south side.
Okay.
And then, leaving the front to be painted, repaired, and painted, cuts down on the cost to you.
Yeah.
It keeps that historical-
I could make that work, I'm sure. Even if I, even if I had to run a patch or an exact duplicate of that mill for the limited amount of siding at the front, because of the windows and the doors, the footage wouldn't be so bad.
Well, there, again, if you did the work across the front, and you found that you had some bad spots, I think, right around the side to the north, you have the same siding, you could pull a section of that off and use it for fill, and then replace that.
Yeah, so that's the only thing we were worried about doing, because the thing is waterproof now, and we don't want to, like, you start pulling old nails off, you open up holes-
You put Tyvek over that, you should be fine. And especially on the north side.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Any further questions with the applicant? Okay, you can have a seat.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm interested in Commissioner Gottberg, in what sort of a compromise do you think is, is possible here? If any. There may not be any, and I'm, I really am genuinely interested, because I think I understand where you're coming from, and I am respectful of that position. And, and, and your answer may be, well, I don't think we can compromise at all, it should just be this way, the standards are written this way, boom. And, and that's fine, but I, but I am interested in knowing where you might be with this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess for me, where I'm coming from is that, you know, I view our, our ordinances as sort of the rulebook that prospective buyers can look at when they're looking to purchase a property. And so, a person who looks at these and does their due diligence and thinks, I have to follow these rules, is gonna perhaps decide, I'm not buying a house in a historic district, because it's gonna cost me too much to restore, rather than renovate. Whereas, another person may look at that same set of guidelines and think, I really want to be in a historic district, because I don't want the historical character of my neighborhood changing. I don't want my neighbor's house to have horizontal wood siding changed to batten board siding. To me, the horizontal siding is very important. I think that's a really visual, obvious to anyone in the neighborhood. I'm more willing to compromise on windows. So, I think in this case, if the appearance can be the same, but it's a different material, that's an area where I would compromise on.
That's really encouraging, because I, I would kind of be in the exact same position. I do concur that I think the, the horizontal wood siding really is a compelling feature of the house. I'm still hung up, frankly, on the vinyl windows, too, because I, I thought that, you know, again, according to the standards and guidelines, you know, they, we're not supposed to be doing that unless there's a compelling economic reason as to why, you know, restoration and repair was not possible, and, and we haven't had that opportunity yet. I've, I've already made that statement, so. Anyway, that, that's encouraging to hear, because, and I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I tend to agree as well, with the horizontal being a significant feature. The windows, I kind of land on that same idea of, I agreed with Commissioner List. I watched the last meeting that I wasn't here for, and being sensitive to our new energy concerns and needs of the future, I think is really important, too, while incorporating, keeping the historic features. I would like to know more about options for the applicant for replicating the horizontal siding, what that kind of costs out to, what the realities of bringing it together, and what possible materials, as Commissioner Gottberg said, could go, provide the same look, but without being prohibitively expensive. It's tricky, because I really, I, I do value the historic district, but I also want to make sure that we don't end up where properties are being just left to, you know, for lack of a better term, rot, because the tenant, or the applicant doesn't want to, or can't replace things. So, my inclination would be that the windows, I think, visually match the overall look of it, but that I'd like to know more information about what kind of siding would be possible to do in a horizontal manner, to keep it more uniform, but also bring it, you know, make it new and refreshed and things for the, the house.
Yeah. You guys keep talking about horizontal siding. The, the key issue on horizontal siding is a profile. Are we talking about a lap siding, hardy plank lap siding? They're using it all over the place. And that's gonna look better than what he has proposed there in, in that application? I don't think so, okay? Will it last longer? Oh, you bet. I've got a 3,000-square-foot house going up in Idaho right now, and we're putting hardy plank wood, or cement fiberboard siding on it. I would think, in, in looking at this, the horizontal, if we went with, if, if we allowed him to use the hardy plank eight-inch or, or 12-inch siding, lap siding across there, it would look like any number of houses throughout the community. It doesn't look like the historical presentation that you're looking for. And so, my question to you is, you're, you're saying horizontal siding, what's, what's the profile?
So, I, I think, I think to your point, Commissioner, and again, being consistent with the standards and guidelines, it has to retain the visual character. So, the horizontal line is just one aspect of that, of that character, right? So, it's gotta be, I think, profile, good word, profile, there may be some other way to describe it. To Commissioner Gottberg's point, you're absolutely correct. People, if you make a buying choice, I agree with that. That kind of gets back, though, to my question, as to when, when did we adopt these standards? Because what do you do for somebody who the standards weren't in place, you know, when they, when they owned their home, but now all of a sudden are subject to it, right? That gets, to me, to the whole issue of fairness. To the chair's point, we don't want homes to just continue to deteriorate, because it's just too expensive to be in compliance with the standards and guidelines. But again, back to my point originally, early on, the standards and guidelines allow for technical and economical considerations, right? That's where it's up to us to bal, we have to balance all of that, right? And then come up with a solution that's defensible, right? That, that is our job. That's what we do here. So, I don't know of materials well enough, you're probably more knowledgeable than I am, it certainly sounds like, as, as to what we can suggest. I concur with Commissioner Gottberg, that the horizontal character, that, that, what that looks like, lines and profiles, should be retained. I, I think that's where I'm at. The board and batten on the below-grade and the other feet, uh, structure is fine, right? I think, I, we have a grievance on that. And then the windows, you know, I'll just kind of see where the rest of the commission goes. The only reason we made an exception for the vinyl windows, even for considering it two weeks ago, the only reason we did that was because there were already vinyl windows that had been installed previously. They didn't do it, they were already there, they were only talking two windows, and to make their house consistent. And I, and I, and I felt that was a reasonable and defensible position to take, so. That being aside, I don't know where, where we might be going if, if commissioners have a thought on a motion, or we want the applicant to bring materials back, suggestions back in materials to meet the requirement for the horizontal. I'll back off my insistence that they pull the, the windows out and put the old ones back, okay? Which is really where I was at.
Yeah, I, I don't know enough about, extensively about the materials and options that are out there myself, or familiar with all of the detail that goes into thinking about what that, what that cost difference is. So, I would be interested in knowing what the options are for the horizontal, if it's not a new milled whole thing, what would the options be, and what would that look like? I, I kind of agree with, I think, what you were saying. I, I kind of like the way condition one is. I think it holds true to keeping the house looking as it looks to all of us today, or did. And then, but allowing for the, of the new windows, the vinyl windows, which I think are, are effective for, for future use, and I'm, I was kind of satisfied, for the most part, with this, and-
Sounds like we want more. We would like to have more information on what the options are to maintain that horizontal look. I appreciate, you know, hardy board is, I've got it on my house, and, you know, in addition to durable, it's fireproof, you know? There's want to be said for that. However, it may not get us where we want to be with maintaining the historical character of the home. So, perhaps we could get some advice from staff on how best to proceed. I think, overall, we're fairly, or some of us are fairly happy with the conditions as written, but we just want a little more detail, so. Is that, Pierre, how, how can you help us craft a, a motion here, that, you know, we, we like where this is going, but we do want some, we would like some more detail, and have them come back to us with examples of siding that they think they can obtain, they can afford, and that, that, you know, they've heard us talk about maintaining this character. So, what advice can you give us?
Yeah, first of all, before I give some actual advice, as far as the way staff fashioned condition number one, actually, what we were recommending for approval, we tried to provide a compromise to the applicant. Staff felt that it was extremely important to maintain the vertical batten board below grade. That's what's existing, and he wants to replace it. That's, that's fine, and that's consistent with what you see on other buildings as well. But as far as what I would call, based on what Commissioner Friend was saying, above the Street grade, it clearly, it's horizontal, and most older homes are with horizontal siding. I think you recall when I talked a little bit about, you know, my own home that I used to own, it was built in 1906, on B Street, and on, at B and Coloma Street. You know, when I bought that house, it had a fiber press board. It was a vertical press board, and it was rotten and falling apart, so I pulled it off, and it had really nice-looking shiplap vertical, or, I'm sorry, horizontal siding on it, no, vertical siding. And it was in bad shape, and that's why I think the previous owner, before I bought the place, did that. And I was able, I actually took a piece of that siding and took it down to Barnett and Sons in Sacramento, and they milled wood to match that exact siding type, and I had it re-sided. So, you know, basically, I didn't repair the old siding, because the old siding was in bad shape. It's sort of like what Chris Payne said earlier, restoration is not new construction, and it's not, you know, it's not, it's, it is very involved. And so, where I couldn't really repair that existing siding, I was able to replace it with, with like-kind, the same material and the same exact, I guess Barnett and Sons has been in business for 100-plus years, so they had all the original keys. Now, that was some time ago I did that, so I'm sure it was a lot cheaper then than it is now. But as far as, so on the siding, I think it's important to keep the siding, and, and mind you, there is a difference between this house and the house that the commission considered two weeks ago. I know there was reference to, well, there's some vinyl windows on other sides of the house that have been replaced. Well, the way the, the ordinance reads, it's what's visible from a street, and so, it's sometime those vinyl windows were replaced on that historic house, in that historic district, wouldn't have required review by the commission, it just would have required a building permit, because it wasn't, those windows weren't visible to the street. So, it can't be, it can't be used as a justification then, to then the street side or the visible side, then you can reduce the standards, because on the side, you can't see it. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go that far. On this one, this house is visible from every elevation. I mean, it's from, you know, you've got the Sacramento side, it's visible from Chamberlain, and it's visible from Chapel. And so, you do want to do what you can, at least to maintain the look. I think that's very important, at least what I'm hearing from the commission, is to maintain that historic look. You can't always, you know, use the same materials because of cost and other reasons. And mind you, when there are, it's probably a little bit more expensive. I was doing a little research on it, on the single or double-hung wood windows. There are manufacturers that manufacture windows that replicate pretty well the original wood windows, and they meet Title 24, and you can get them dual-pane, and so to say that they wouldn't meet all those requirements isn't really true. I think it could, but it is more expensive. From what I, my research saw that they were at least double to triple the expense of, of the vinyl windows. And that's why I think staff went ahead and compromised- Um, and that's why I think staff went ahead and compromised mainly because, uh, for two reasons, that the wood windows were already removed for five, at least five of the windows that staff could see. We don't know if those are thrown away, what happened to them or what their condition was. Um, but because I think there was less reason to allow for the replacement of the, of the, going from wood to vinyl on the last application and on this one. So it seemed like a fair compromise to allow that if the commission was comfortable, uh, with that compromise and maintaining that look. And on the last, on the last one you did two weeks ago, you did allow staff the ability to review and approve. And I would suggest if you like the way the condition approval one is written, I would recommend then that you give, uh, staff then the authority to look at the, um, horizontal siding then that the applicant, uh, can propose if you go in that direction. Because I know the applicant was very concerned about weather and having the building open and he really wants to get a move on with the construction. So I hope that's, long discussion is helpful.
Madam Chair, if I may, Pierre, thanks for that. Two weeks ago, it wasn't simply the fact that there were already existing vinyl, there was the cost component, uh, that came up as well. So there, we did consider that. So there were a number of things that led to that exception. Now, the standards and guidelines reference technical and economical considerations. That doesn't mean that, uh, you can just say, well, this will be hard to do and it's gonna cost me more, right? What we don't really have, and I think what, what handicaps us a bit is we don't have objective data that says, you know, from, you know, we used to get, you know, sign people and lighting people that came to commission on projects and provided some expert information on things. And perhaps, you know, when these come up as, as background information, the app, we need the applicants to come with more objective data for us to make it, for them to make their case. If they want an exception, you know, well, here, here's why we need this exception, right? Because it's just too difficult to, to fix this, right? Or it's just way too expensive to replace it or restore it, right? And, and again, we do have the repair, restore. In fact, it's listed in the staff report. I saw you, the language is, is pretty specific, right? And, and I do think we should be adhering to that. Um, and I am, I'm personally uncomfortable with the vinyl windows frankly, because I, I really don't think, you know, I, I, I don't know where, where I'm at with that one. I'm, I'm totally good to go, I think, with requiring, uh, on, on the, the horizontal siding and perhaps having them come back with some suggestions. Or if, you know, my fellow commissioners are comfortable with them working with staff, I, I could go with that route as well, so.
I, I guess I would add to that. I also am uncomfortable with the windows, although it's an area I'm willing to compromise on if needed. Um, I think what we did on the last applicant was ask them to come back with, uh, options for staff.
Right.
Yes. Um, so I, I would consider basically putting the same terminology in, um, to this as well and treating those two applicants the same, with the same need to come back to staff, wood composite vinyl, not just outright approving the vinyl windows because they were installed.
Well, that raises an interesting question, right? So, uh, let me, let me see if I can noodle this through a little bit. They, in order to retain the vinyl windows, forget that the fact they're in, let's, let's, let's presume we were, the request to, came to us, we wanna put these vinyl windows in. Let's, let's treat it that way and forget the fact they're already in there. And we're going to, uh, allow staff to make that determination like we are doing for the other, did for the other applicant, right? Is that, okay, so far, so good. So, the applicant would need to show why use, trying, trying to either repair, that's out of the question because it's already done, replace with like for like, right? That's the standard. Why can't they replace like for like? My guess is it's gonna be less of a technical issue and more of an economic issue, right? That's probably going to be it. Although with the, the weights in, uh, in the, the casings, I think is what they're called. And I had that in, in my house on Elm. I know all about that and they don't work. Um, so tech, possibly technically we can't do that, but economically is probably going to be the, the, the reason, right? So they need, they need to bring that data to staff. And then the determination's gonna be made, we would be making that determination. Well, that's not that much of it, it's more, we get it, but you're in the historic district. By the way, we probably oughta ask staff to kinda clarify this, the, the business professional versus the historic, because that seems to be a question, the applicant brought that up and I meant to ask staff about this. We may need to have that clarified if it's possible. But, and I don't mean to be long-winded about this, but I'm trying to just work through the, the process here. In order to use, in order to have the windows that are in approved, and I'm operating in a scenario they weren't, it would have to be shown that it's either too difficult to put what was taken out or it's too expensive. Is that right? That, that's how we meet the intent of the standards and guidelines as I understand. Is that right?
I would agree with that.
Okay, so that, that's what, that's what the applicant is gonna have to demonstrate to staff. So that's gotta be real clear. And that might even need to be in the motion. I mean, that's kinda why we're, we're going this way, uh, to be, so we're providing even more clarity to the applicant and to the public as to why we didn't outright reject the vinyl windows and why, uh, we didn't outright accept them, okay? That we hadn't, and how we're trying to exercise due diligence in applying the standards and guidelines. That, because that's what this is all about at the end of the day. And, and really the windows are, are the tricky one. The siding, I have, I have no problem. Pierre, are you able to speak at all on the issue the applicant brought up regarding the business professional versus the historic? And is there any relevance to, or significance to that?
Um, I would just start by saying there is, there is no relevance. It doesn't change anything as far as what's before you. Uh, the applicant, uh, did show me a letter that was provided to him by Mr. Painter. We, we provide those letters typically when there's a question of a non-conforming use. So we have a business professional zone with two single family dwellings on it. And a lot of times there's a question with either the insurance or the lender before they purchased the property. You know, sometimes it's called a burn down letter. If the house catches fire, can they restore it even though it's inconsistent with the zoning? And so that's what that letter was meant to clarify. It has nothing to do with the historic district, which is an overlay, but it is zoned business professional. So if a future owner, and you'll see this in lots of communities that have older homes, especially when the, when the, uh, uh, business district expands into the older neighborhoods, you see that in Folsom, you see it in Sacramento, where a home is historic and it, it's purchased by somebody, but it's zoned something else than residential, allowing for commercial use. And so they do a change of occupancy and so you have a small business in the home. You see that right here on Placerville on Chamberlain Street. A lot of those older homes now are offices, even though they maintain the historic character on the exterior, inside they're an office. So there's really, it's really more options for the owner in the future. If they wish to convert those to an office use, they can do that. Um, but yes, to answer your question, there is no relevance. The, the subject property is in the historic district. So the map was adopted by ordinance and it's subject to the, to all the standards regardless of it being zoned business professional.
Okay, thank you. And I, but I think that helps explain how the applicant might've been confused that they weren't in a historic district, they were in a business professional. So I'll, I'll give them that.
Okay.
May I please take a thought of this really quick?
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, we did speak with Andrew Painter. And yes, we were in a BP zone. One of our considerations of buying this property was to convert it to BP use. And that could also be multi-unit perhaps. These discussions were done with Andrew Painter. He specifically told me this was BP zoning with housing use. He didn't say that we were being controlled by the historic zone. We asked that question. Now, I'm not saying that there's any fault on the city, but Mr. Rivas did clear us with us with his mapping that he showed us, which we found somewhat inconsistent with a couple. And so we were looking at dates about mapping. The neighbor said that she had already went through this once before and they determined that those homes were not in the historic area in an, in the application that she was involved in. Told my wife that. So there has been some confusion with the city. I'm not putting any blame on them. We're here just trying to resolve it. The windows cannot be put back the way they were. They can't be big enough for egress egress. If you take the five inch pocket and add that trim back, we become too small. If you want us to go back with a wood window as a replacement, I would just ask once again, is that fair to us when you've allowed these replacements with others? And right off of Chamberlain, you can see the vinyl windows. I mean, I've got, I've got pictures on my phone that I submitted some of them to Mr. Rivas.
So that, that's really, that's kinda the point, uh, I'm, I'm making.
Yeah.
Regarding the technical consideration.
Right. And that, and as far as.
So.
Go ahead. But just one more point, please. There is a cottage lap that has, the closest that I know of, the Boise Cascade used to make, it was a three-tiered 16-foot piece, fiber siding that had a similar cove and it had three of them leaving about five inch profiles. That's the only siding I can think of that you can get that's close to showing that wider profile of the horizontal line because, uh, everything else is like either lap over or a very thin line of an exposure of like a T and G siding that's available now. I'd be glad to provide you samples that you would tell me which one to choose with your letter of approval and I could move forward with that. But I would wait obviously until you said, this is the one we want you to do. But with the windows, I mean, other than ripping those out and trying to go back and put wood on there, well, if you're, if you're, if you're insisting on that, I suppose we'd have to try. But, um, it seems unfair to us with what has already been done. Um, I think I, and the, the other thing, there's a reference to the lower skirt being board and batten that is not board and batten, that is one by six T and G. It has been, looks like it's been replaced or repaired in certain places with one by si- a one by six ship lap, which looks the same, but a T and G is, it, well, Mr. Litz knows what I'm talking about. T and G is a tongue and groove and one is a lap. So, but it is not board and batten. It's just T and G, one by six.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Chair Lepper.
Yes.
So ready to make a motion?
I would love to entertain that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I, I think staff has one other comment too. Um, when, when a historic home is located in the historic district or if it's designated singularly as an historic structure, uh, there is the historic building code, which allows for the, uh, maintaining the character of the original structure and stuff of the home, even though it doesn't meet current standards. Just wanna make sure that's clear.
So that, that's interesting because if you rent it out, which I think is the case here, and then you, the, the tenant is in a room that does not have a fire code egress size, it would seem, it would seem that those kind of butt heads with each other, right? It's almost like, well, you know, you have to put, don't you have to sprinkler some of the, for, for fire code, for, for business use? You see what, where I'm going with that, Pierre?
Yes, but let's just say this house was well maintained since 1880. Well, then you'd be in the same condition. You can't go in there and the city wouldn't force them. Well, those windows now, even though there's nothing wrong with them, they don't meet current code, you gotta rip them out, put in larger windows. No, that's not the case.
You're good. Would you, are you still prepared to? Okay, I'd like to hear it.
I move that, um, we adopt the staff report as part of the public record along with the findings listed in attachment C and the conditions of approval in attachment D with the following amendments. One, uh, line one where it says above grade, add, uh, above the grade of Sacramento Street, just for clarity. Then, uh, with uniform, uniform horizontal wood lap siding that is subject to approval by staff. Lay over or replace the existing vertical siding below grade, garage basement with same. Goes on to re- replace six original single hung wood windows with new, and this is the third amendment, a new vinyl wood or composite, uh, windows, again, subject to staff approval. And, uh, leaving the remaining text of the conditions of approval as, uh, presented in our March 15th, uh, 2022 staff report. That is my motion, Chair Lepper.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, so.
I, I still would like to have the front of the house remain and repaired to keep the character of the community. So if, I'll support it if you wanna add that. It's gonna save them money, let's.
I, I feel the same way you do. From where we sit now, we don't know the condition of that. And, um, you know, again, weather is, is setting in. I think we should leave that to the discretion of the applicant.
If, then, then put the if possible.
So.
If possible, keep.
Replace.
The Sacramento.
Replace existing horizontal.
Retain, so I think, correct me if I'm wrong. Commissioner Liss is suggesting, uh, retaining, uh, the, the wood as is on the front of the structure, uh, repaired as may be needed unless the applicant can demonstrate to staff that it would be cost prohibitive, there's too much damage, it would be cost prohibited to do so, in which case they would use the, the wood that you, whatever your language was, wood or, no, that's the wrong language. Uh, lay over, replace existing with uniform. They'd have to, they could use that for the front. Am I on the right, kinda the right track?
Yeah.
If at all possible, keep the front the way it is. If for whatever reason you discover that it's deteriorated, there's problems with it, it has to be replaced, then it would be replaced, uh, with the uniform horizontal wood lap siding. I think that's what Commissioner Liss is saying.
The other, the other issue is you're calling for wood siding. Fiber board is a wood composite.
We're not allowing composite. I don't think we're allowing composite.
No, you're saying wood siding. So you're restricting him to, what he was talking about is not a wood, is not a quote unquote wood product, it's a fiber, it's a wood fiber and, and resin.
The cottage lap from Boise.
Yeah, it's a, it's not a solid wood fiber.
Oh, gotcha, so.
Okay.
It's a composite structure.
It's a composite.
If I understand what you're saying, you would, uh, you are in agreement with that? You would like to give them the latitude to use a composite, uh, hardy board, just as we're giving, uh, last time we talked.
If you say wood siding, horizontal wood siding, I could almost guarantee you, he won't find anything that he can afford to put on that house. Okay? Am I not correct? Just yes or no? Okay.
So your amendment is to, uh, give the applicant a little more leeway rather than saying wood lap siding, say, uh, wood composite. wood lap siding, say wood composite hardy board?
No, I didn't say hardy board, okay? Fiber board, fiber board, yes.
So you want to have, your, your amendment is to give them more leeway in the selection of materials?
Right, right.
Okay, so, a uniform horizontal, let's just delete the word wood...
That's what I...
And leave it again to the discretion of staff for, so, it would read then, "Uniform horizontal lap siding that is subject to approval by staff." Does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah.
And adding that, and retaining or repairing wood...
And if possible, retain and repair the Sacramento fascia.
The wood siding on the east elevation.
On the east elevation, yes.
I had, yeah, that's what I'd written after the word siding, "Subject to approval by staff and retaining slash repairing the wood on the eastern elevation if possible."
On eastern elevation.
I believe that's the, the front of the house. I just wanted to make sure.
To the east.
Mm-hmm. And so, does that sound sufficient? So it would be layer, lay over or replace existing horizontal lap siding above grade, above Sacramento Street grade, with uniform horizontal lap siding, subject to approval by staff, and retaining slash repairing wood on eastern elevation if possible, and lay over or replace existing board and batten below grade garage slash basement with same.
Okay.
Does that sound, does that get to the heart of what we were trying to cover in that?
I'm trying to make it, to make sure that it's clear and not unwieldy, so I was wondering if we should just put at the end of the text, for number one, just a statement that retaining original material is preferred? Or do you want it up there where we're talking about the horizontal lap siding? We think it's important for it to be up there at the beginning of the condition.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
And then, to be clear, the second, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, let's think about the overall, they're going to replace the, at the corner, then, imagine that, you know, they're going to put in some sort of new material above grade, so we'll have a discontinuity, but you're not concerned about this face versus...
You would have a corner board, and, and I'm sure it already has it, if I'm not mistaken.
That, that look, you're...
Three or four-inch corner board.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's not butt siding to butt siding.
This.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Michael, you have any comments on that?
I have some language I want to insert once you've resolved this, if you're comfortable with where you're...
How about this discontinuity between this east face and the south face?
I don't have a challenge with that.
And Nicole, are you comfortable with that discontinuity between, because it's, it's not going to be the same? And, you know, you will have a corner board between them, but, you know, the faces will be adjacent.
I mean, we have a discontinuity now, right? Because it's different siding. I mean, it's all horizontal wood siding.
But that's, but this is traditional, where your front fascia is different than the side fascia, so...
Yes, correct.
That's what I'm saying, I think it's not contrary to the existing historic condition.
And doesn't detract from the historic character.
Yeah.
All right, it said that, "Subject to approval by staff," so semi-colon, retaining existing material on the front is preferred, on the Sacramento...
Sacramento elevation.
Sacramento elevation is preferred. Okay.
Point of order, second needs to approve.
Oh, second, I approve the amendment, thank you for that point of order. I approve the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd like to add...
That's, that's fine, I'm, I'm...
I'd like to add some additional language, following the semicolon right before the third condition, okay, so...
Talking about the windows?
Well, right after windows is a semicolon, so right after that and before number three, I want to add, "To the extent conditions one and two are consistent with the city's application of the Secretary of State's standards and guidelines."
Okay. Once more?
Okay. "To the extent conditions one and two are consistent with the city's application of the Secretary of State's standards and guidelines." So there's no question about how we're approaching this.
Okay.
I need the maker of the motion to accept that amendment.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to accept...
You accept my, my friendly amendment, and I, and I accept my own friendly amendment.
And also that of Commissioner List about, right, so I'll make that motion to accept those amendments?
And I second. Thank you.
Okay. Just so I'm, I'm clear and everything's clear, lay over or replace existing horizontal lap siding above the grade with, with uniform horizontal lap siding, subject to approval by staff, and retaining slash repairing existing wood on Sacramento elevation if possible. Replace six original single-hung wood windows with new vinyl, and earlier we had talked about adding the word wood or composite in there?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so...
Just like the last part.
Perfect. With new wood, with new vinyl wood or composite, single-hung windows, to the extent conditions one and two are consistent with the city's application of the SOI standards and guidelines. And then move on to three, and the rest is as typed.
Okay.
Okay?
You've got it.
Okay, and we have a first approval, and, Michael, you were the second?
I was the second, and, and we've, we've adopted all of the other conditions, you know, because we just did condition one, so we adopt, we accept all of the other conditions.
My original motion was to adopt the, the remaining conditions as presented in the staff report.
All right, just so it's clear on that. And, and just for sake of discussion, the reason I, I feel it's important, that language I added is because we're not actually approving anything quite yet, because the applicant's got to go back to staff, right, and say, "Okay, here's the material I'm choosing for the siding, and here's what I want to do with the windows, and here's why I'm going to do the windows, I need to do this with the windows," right? So that's, that's kind of how that all gets tied together, in my view.
And I appreciate your indulgence, Pierre, you know, you are in the, we're giving you that responsibility, but you understand our concerns, and also given the, you know, the weather, the fact that the applicant needs to get this house buttoned up, so I appreciate you working on our behalf, and I'm sure that, you know, your, our interests will be well-represented. I think in a more perfect application, you know, they would come to us with actual, maybe physical samples, not just, you know, we had the paint chips, and, you know, I think the, the colors chosen are suitable for the neighborhood, but, right, I think that the commission should be given that option to, to look at the actual materials. You made a mention of that, Michael, earlier on, how we've kind of been cut out of the process, because, you know, we're approving this after the fact, and, and, you know, we do that a lot for different things, not, not historical review, but people have already done some work, and somehow, you know, code enforcement or whatever found that, and so they have to come back to us for approval after the fact. So this is kind of one of those cases, but, you know, given that we are trying to protect the, this character of the historic district, it's, it's, it is important to give the, give us that opportunity to look at things from the start. But I'll just say that so that if anyone out there has got a project they're thinking of, maybe they will, you know, follow the process a little more directly the way I think it should be laid out.
And the intent of our motion would be if, if staff feels, okay, this is what I think is appropriate, but I'd like the commission to see it, nothing precludes staff from bringing it back to us and say, "Take a look at this," right?
That is correct. If, if staff feels that the applicant is, is not putting a good faith effort into meeting your direction, staff would then bump it back up to you for your review and approval.
Thank you.
That's perfect, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We can go ahead and call roll?
I really got to get this clear. The lower section is above, is on a water table above it, that is one-by-six, that's not being touched, and it was stated earlier that it would be replaced with same, and I didn't know if that meant same as one-by-six if necessary.
Okay.
But I want to be sure that when it goes to Mr. Rivas, that he's not expecting that we're replacing that with horizontal siding below.
Right, in the, I think that's fairly clear, don't, don't you think, Chair Lepper?
Okay. It said, you made a comment about, and replace with same, and that could be taken both ways, like the same that is there?
Yes.
Or the same that I, we have suggested, so I just want to...
I understand exactly what you're saying, and, let's see if there's any way to just...
With existing?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if, if staff could just give a comment on that.
Yep.
The, the applicant pointed out that staff incorrectly identified that siding below Sacramento Street grade as being board and batten, so it was our opinion that the applicant wanted to replace whatever that is with board and batten. But if it's going to be replaced with the same siding that's on there now, we can certainly revise that and take away, because we, we state, "Replace existing board and batten," and so if it's not, we want to call it what it is.
So we should strike board and batten, existing siding? And just say, "Vertical siding," let's see, below-grade vertical siding with same? Is that...
It seems we just should just say, "Replace existing siding below grade with the same," right? Because that's what we're, we're talking about, just that.
I got a help here, because that siding is intact, there may be a few boards that need to be replaced, but the one-by-six is intact. The water table, if you look at there, the board and batten where it calls out the line, that water table stays there, that's an existing old water table that we flashed over, and the one-by-six below is the skirting below the floor level, and that all stays intact. We, we've never said that we're replacing that at all, never once. So what we're replacing is the horizontal siding above, and we're only actually laying over it, was what the plan was, and, and using now horizontal siding that you're suggesting, which I would bring you, Mr. Rivas, the samples to select. But I just want to be sure of that, because we're, we have no intentions of touching that skirting below, there's only a few boards that might need to be replaced. That's it.
So could we just take out the whole part about that below grade, if it's not really in the application for being changed?
Just repaired. We, we see a few boards that's got holes in it where they drilled like a dryer vent or something, we're going to change those, because we don't want a hole in a wall, but other than that...
Yeah, staff would suggest us removing that...
Yeah.
Reference to the below grade, and in its entirety, and per what the applicant, how he described it, that wouldn't require a building permit. You can do repair.
Okay.
If it's non-structural, you're just replacing or filling a hole or removing some boards, replacing boards, that doesn't require a building permit at all.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to get the approval, and then they come out and say, "Hey, you're supposed to put horizontal siding below, too." But that's not the...
No, we, we thought you were placing it with vertical board and batten, so that's where we erred in our description of the project.
All right.
So I think we're, we're clear. I'm clear anyways.
Yeah, so we're just basically removing the "and lay over or replace existing board and batten below grade garage slash basement with same," we're removing that line.
That, that phrase, yeah. So it just ends at...
Yeah, we're moving that, that phrase just entirely, because basically it's not even in the application at this point. If it's not getting changed, it's not being addressed, then we're not going to address it. So, I know I've read it a thousand times, but I just really do want to be clear, "Lay over or replace existing horizontal lap siding above grade with uniform horizontal lap siding, subject to approval by staff, and retaining slash repairing existing wood on Sacramento East elevation if possible. Two, replace six original single-hung wood windows with new vinyl wood or composite white single-hung windows, to the extent conditions one and two are consistent with the city's application of the SOI standards and guidelines, and three to the end of the paragraph are as originally printed. Replace the rain gutters and paint the entire home cottage white with door and gutters painted Dynasty Marquee Black to the existing single-family residence." Matched to one. Okay? Does that sound good? So my first and second?
I'm good to go.
Another motion?
So, the maker of the motion is accepting that new language?
I will accept that additional amendment, deleting that, that phrase.
And I'll, I'll accept that amendment.
Okay.
I second that amendment.
Okay. Everyone is clear on the motion, okay? So we'll go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gopper? Commissioner Keeney?
Yes.
Chair Lepper?
Yes.
Commissioner List?
Yes.
Okay, so, the project has been approved as stated, and there is also a reminder that there is a 10-day calendar appeal period for planning commission decisions. All appeals can be made by an interested party via submission of a written request to the city clerk at City Hall. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, that was a long, yeah, thank you. And, so we will move on to 11 continued items. Do we have any continued items today? Mr. Rivas?
We have no continued items today.
Okay, great. Do we have any new business?
We have no new business.
Okay, excuse me. Do we have any matters for, from commissioners or from staff? Do any commissioners have any matters for staff?
Just, Pierre, again, reiterating the desire to have the joint workshop with council on the SOI.
Do you have anything for us, Pierre?
I do.
Okay.
Let's see. Two weeks ago, the Planning Commission approved site plan review 21-05, that was for 939 Lincoln Street, it was in the historical district, it was a historic review. There was an appeal filed within the 10-day appeal, so staff is looking at that item being heard by the city council on April the 12th. I think if that's a, if I'm correct, that's a Tuesday that they would hold a meeting. We will have a meeting on April the 5th, and we're going to have three items on that. One is a variance. It's a reduction in setback for an HVAC from 10 feet to three feet in the business professionals, business professional zone, and that's at 1,000 Fowler Way. Also proposed to be on the agenda for April 5th is a temporary use permit, and that's to allow Marshall Medical Center to have a temporary CT scanner, mobile trailer, while they're building the facility inside their hospital to house the CT scanner, that's at 1,100 Marshall Way. And then a third item is site plan review 2104, that's for 1332 Broadway, and that's for the Gold Country Inn. We're going to come back with their revised elevations and landscaping plan, so they're doing a whole, let's just say, facelift of that hotel, or motel, I should say. So those are the three items that will be on, on your next agenda.
Okay, great. We look forward to discussing them. Unless anyone has anything else, I will go ahead and adjourn the March 15th, 2022 Plaisterville Planning Commission meeting at 8:28 PM.